Good evening. Call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education for December 15, 2021. Will everyone please rise for the pledge to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Forgive me. Sorry. A reading of our mission statement. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. May I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Questions or comments from interested citizens? Okay, we have one this evening. Janet Steltz, who will be speaking in regards to communication. Ms. Steltz, the podium right down here. And just a reminder that you'll have three minutes for your comments, and the Board and Mrs. Rodriguez will respond at our next meeting in January.
So, gonna keep it brief, but a few things that I did want to address. The school's report card was brought up last time, and I looked a little deeper. And reading proficiency for, this is about eighth grade, so like middle of the road, but it's about the same, between 22 and 28% for reading proficiency, but more specifically for Black and African-American children, it's 17%. Hispanic and Latino children, it's 19%. For math proficiency, it is 12% for Black and African-American children, and 14% for Hispanic and Latino children. I'm pointing this out because there's a lot of time and resources being spent on things that have nothing to do with academics, that have nothing to do with school, with reading, writing, math, basic academic skills and abilities. Each week, well, each month, parents have been coming here for the past several months communicating to our concerns, where we feel there's a serious imbalance in how our school resources are being spent and allocated. We're given 30 minutes for public speaking, three minutes each, but then there's a rule that we're not allowed to yield our time to other people. I see no valid reason for that, and I'm going somewhere with this. When you make a rule like that, it tells us you're not really interested in hearing what we have to say, rather suppressing our speech, not letting us tell you what we need to tell you in a complete and cohesive manner. This report card, I'm bringing that up, and what does this all have to do? This is for 2019, a booming economy, no COVID yet, all the money and resources being wasted on social emotional learning. It sounds really nice, but we've showed you in our private meeting, we've showed you that there are teachers that are using the classrooms as political pulpits. We've showed you the evidence, okay, that are saturated in Marxist ideology. Furthermore, there is an ideology quiz that has to do with a perfect comparison with those 30 questions that we all, a bunch of us, gave you. The ideology quiz has very similar questions on it, except they're given to children here at Monroe Woodbury. Children answer those questions, not with blanket statements, not with vague answers, but specific answers. So the fact that the school expects these children to answer these types of questions, are you a racist, do you believe in abortion? These are pretty racy questions to ask children at school when they're 12% math proficiency. I think there's a little misstep here on what's being focused on for our children. Too much ideology, not enough academia. I mean, is that even literate? 12%? 17% reading proficiency? That being said...
That's time. Thank you.
Okay. Last sentence. You're not a medical provider, you're not a mental health provider, and you're not a moral authority. Please stay in your lane and get these grades back up so our children can learn again. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Matthew L. I'm just gonna remind everybody too, for future reference when filling out the paper, if you can please fill out the paper in its entirety so that we know who's speaking. Thank you.
This mask was bought at Party City. It was 12 cents. 12 cents. It's a surgical mask, but it's a prop that was bought with a uniform, you know, it's a costume, and used to letting the kids in the school with it to stop a virus. A real surgical mask isn't to stop a virus, it's to stop blood from splashing up the patient they're operating on. It's not a virus mask. So, that's that one. Here's one from the school, from a 2020 graduation. If I put it up to my eyes, I could pretty much see these guys with it. That's from the Monroe Woodbury School, and the kids are going into the school with this. Who on the Board, raise your hand, believes that this will stop COVID-19, SARS-CoV-2? No one? All right, here's another one from Monroe Woodbury. It says Birthday Crusaders. This one I could even see is even better if I put it up to my eyes. And that you're letting the kids in the school with. I submitted some questions to the Board. You was asked to do that earlier, and I did. Did you receive those?
I have not received any questions from you.
If I ask you those questions now, I need those answers, because I already know the answers to them. It's like when a teacher asks the child a question, the teacher knows the answer, and they just want to see if the child does. I'm gonna ask these guys some questions. I know the answers to them, and the public's gonna know about them. I think yous guys should as well. So, I'm gonna take all the time necessary. It shouldn't be more than another minute, but here are my questions. Who's regulating the mask mandate and checking each person as they get on the bus? Can you give me that person's name? Or the person's name that's checking the kids when they're entering the school to tell them that these masks are not good enough, go see the nurse, get another one? Who's that person?
We're not gonna get into a dialogue this evening.
It's not a dialogue, it's a question. This is, I'm asking the Board the question, it's a serious concern. Is it not, people? Who's checking those masks?
If you'd like, you can put that in an email to us.
I didn't. And I'll show you when I said that, it was four days ago.
Okay. I can show you that I don't have it, sir.
Question two. Does the, does the school get fined if someone does not have a mask? Does the school get fined if someone in the school does not have a mask on school premises? Yes or no?
We're not answering that this evening.
Well, that's supposed to be yes. The answer to that is yes, people. I have pictures of over 40 people in the school, on school premises, in the past year, dated pictures of more than 40 students, staff members, and teachers without masks on, and there's over 100 people in the past three months that tested positive for COVID in the school district. Another 34, just today in an email. There are people that have to be held responsible that are not wearing these masks in the school, and we need to know their names. They are public officials, and they work for us.
Thank you. That's your time.
That is my time.
Update on questions or comments from the previous December 1 meeting?
Yes. We had a lady who got up and spoke about, you know, recommendations. One of the recommendations that she made was taking a look, for the district to take a look at hiring substitutes. That is something that we're looking into, and that's really just the response that we have, looking at the potential of hiring some more substitutes so that we can have more teachers in the building and also support us with the home instruction for students that are in quarantine. That was it.
Okay, thank you. This evening, we have our fire safety commendations, which will be in recognition of the Michael J. Fitzhula Fire Safety Poster Contest winners, and I'm gonna ask for Mr. Cotto, our North Maine principal, to come up. Thank you, Mr. Cotto.
Thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez, the Cabinet, the Board of Education, for supporting our students and helping Monroe Woodbury promote fire safety. This year's Michael J. Fitzhula 2021 Fire Safety Poster Contest theme was Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety. The theme encourages students and their families to learn the different sounds smoke and carbon monoxide alarms make, and the actions to take if the alarm sounds. We encounter many sounds in our daily lives, but some are more urgent than others. We are asking the students, and we will see some of them tonight, to create art to help spread the message about the sounds of fire safety, what the sounds mean, and how to properly respond to those sounds. This year, our students had the opportunity to visit with local firemen from Harriman, the village of Monroe, the town of Woodbury, at our schools. The students learned how to, believe it or not, drop and roll toward the trucks as well. Also, while the firefighters were at the buildings, they shared lunch with some of the students, they walked the buildings, and they also judged the fire safety posters that the students had submitted. So, at this time, I would like to invite up the Sapphire principal, Kaitlin Caldwell, to present the Sapphire Awards, first place.
Thank you, Mr. Cotto. I will say, on behalf of all of the students at Sapphire, we really enjoyed having our firefighters at school, judging our students' work, but also visiting with our students. We have many parents of students who are currently volunteer firefighters, so we thank you all for your incredible work. So please join me in congratulating the following student. The student is the first-place kindergartner in the Michael J. Fitzhula Jr. Fire Safety Poster Concert, Contest, I'm sorry, at Sapphire. Congratulations to Colton Lundgren. Colton, if you're here, can you come up? And then for first grade, we want to congratulate Louis Bufo. Congratulations, Louis. You are the first-place winner for the first grade at Sapphire Elementary School for the Fire.
Next to the stage are our Smith Clover administrators, Mr. Berger, and Nikki Regan.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to congratulate all of our participants at Smith Clover. We had some outstanding poster entries, and it was a very difficult decision, but with that, we would like to congratulate, as first-place winner for kindergarten, we have Liwan Noe. Is Liwan here or down there? Kamala Liwan. And our first grade, first-place winner at Smith Clover Elementary School, we want to congratulate Logan Blake. Is Logan here? Congratulations. Thank you.
We did have the Sapphire student show up, so Ms. Caldwell's back up on stage.
Yes. So, Colton Lundgren, can you come forward to receive your award? Colton, congratulations, you are the first-place winner for kindergarten at Sapphire Elementary School.
We also have some of our firefighters here to present the awards with us tonight, too. They volunteered their time tonight. Now for our two five students. First up is Central Valley and Principal Dr. Alt. Here she is.
Good evening, everyone. We at Central Valley are very proud of all of our children who participated in the Fire Safety Awards Contest, and we would also like to thank our firefighters who came and shared their time with us. Our children thoroughly enjoyed and did a lot of learning as well. We would like to congratulate first-place second grade, Madeline Norberg. For third grade, congratulations, Brenda Mueller. Congratulations to our fourth grade first-place winner, Juliana Ferrara. And fifth grade first place at Central Valley Elementary School, congratulations to Grace Maria Thomas.
Okay, next up is North Maine. That would be us. I'm gonna let Mr. Davis do the announcements for North Maine. For those of you that haven't heard, Mr. Davis on the announcements in the morning, it's always an adventure, because he knows every student by name in North Maine, he just doesn't pronounce them correctly. So, we gotta, we're testing him tonight.
For North Maine, in second grade, thank you, Regan Umagali. In third grade, congratulations, Emma Canisio. In fourth grade, we have Adip Berzingova. And in fifth grade, we have Lila Surbek. Congratulations to all the North Maine winners.
And last but not least, Pine Tree Elementary, Mr. Martin and Mr. Jades.
All right. Good evening, everybody. On behalf of Mr. Jades and myself, we want to congratulate all of our participants for our Fire Poster Safety Contest. It's definitely a tribute to not only our fire personnel, but all of our first responders that work hard every day to keep all of us safe, so we appreciate everybody. We have a couple deserving students at Pine Tree that won first place, and I would like to call them up at this point. For our second grade first-place winner, we have Addison Candela. In third grade, first-place winner, Alisa Lee Lin. In fourth grade, our first-place winner, Carmella Ferraro. And before I announce our fifth grade winner, I'd just like to thank Mr. Cotto and Mr. Davis for putting all this together and helping make this a memorable night for all the students. Thank you. And our fifth grade first-place winner, Michael Rivera. All right, let's give it up for Pine Tree, everybody.
Another round of applause for all of our winners tonight, please. As the Board members get back to their seats, I do have to say, it is, it is a lot of fun, especially when the firemen come to the buildings. Lots of times, they have either children, brothers, sisters, cousins that are in the schools, and they love it. They love coming in, they love seeing the kids. I get a kick out of it, because unfortunately, I've been here, I guess, too long at some point, and some of these guys are my ex-students, and it's nice to see them. They bust my chops, and it is a lot of fun, but it is really good, really good for the community. So, thank you to the firemen for giving their time up. We had probably 25 men and women at our building giving up their time in the middle of the day to volunteer to work with their children. So, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you very much, and congratulations to all of our winners. We're going to just take a quick, short, five-minute break so that some of our students can get home, so we're gonna take a five-minute break. Good evening. We are back in session. There was no Board business that took place. We're gonna move on with our agenda, so if you're still in the audience, if you could just please step outside. Moving on with the agenda, item number 7.1 is an update on district goals.
Trying to get myself together. Good evening. At the beginning of this school year, the Board of Education and the Cabinet came up with, we developed district goals, and there, at this time, there are three district goals, and tonight, we're gonna focus on goal number one. And goal number one is a lot more complex than goals number two and three, because goal number one has multiple pieces. So I just want to go over some of the things that are, the five pieces to goal number one. 1.1 is the central repository, and so that was the district looking for a repository that we could put our data in and that can be easily accessible. Mr. Dr. Villa spoke to that, and we did purchase Hanuit. We're in the process of gathering data, and, and the purpose of that, again, is to be able to have reliable data that anyone in the district can take a look at and be able to formulate assumptions based on the data that we have. Goal number 1.2 is collect the data and analyze it. We are going to, later on, you'll hear me speak about, next meeting, and I'll be talking about a data team, and really to look at the data and be able to say what data is reliable, and how can we move forward and assess our students' achievements. Tonight, we're gonna talk about goal number 1.3, which is create organizational processes. So, what I asked the Cabinet, it's, it's A, an exercise, but it's also a way for us to look at how do we refine what we do, make it more efficient. So, tonight, you're here, the assistant superintendents, each will look at their own expertise, and they'll talk about the processes that they're going to evaluate. Again, it's, it's, it's an act of understanding how to do this, because then there are multiple, many processes throughout the districts. I'm gonna begin with Dr. Villa.
Thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez. So, the 1.3.5 goal, it creates and collects the district-wide processes. For, for information technology, we are required to be in compliance with the New York State Education Law 2D, and the processes that we are focusing on the, on the, on this particular goal is the NIST Cybersecurity Framework. NIST is the National Institute of Standards and Technology Cybersecurity Framework. This is the organization that sets the high standards for every organization, including the school district, like Monroe Woodbury School District. There are five main key functions of the NIST CSF: identify, protect, detect, respond, and recover. We will be doing a work on a specific function called protect, and under the protect, we will be developing the process for the access control. Access control is a key part of how do we grant or deny the access to the users who have the, the high level of access of data into our various data systems, like Power School, our student management system, WinCap, our financial systems, frontline solutions. We use quite a few solutions from frontline, our absence management system, Human Resources uses Recruit and Hire, Professional Growth, which is deemed as My Learning Plan, and IP Direct, and our food service system, which we call Titan. The goal is to develop the specific access control, and who is responsible to manage, and then understand the access of who has what kind of the access and why. That would be the process that we will be developing for Technology Department.
Thank you, Dr. Vias. Next is Dr. Hassler.
So, one of the goals of the Curriculum and Instruction Task Force, back from the Strategic Plan Initiative, was to develop a curriculum manual, and that process was something that was started by the team on the task force, and it consisted of compiling some of the most common processes and procedures within the Curriculum and Instruction Office, which include summer curriculum requests, textbook requests, in-service course proposals, field trip requests, and club proposals. And basically, the goal of the group at that time was to compile this information, and how can we best make sure that we communicate effectively to the teachers and the administrators that use these processes, what are included, the documentation that needs to be completed, and what they need to go through and what they need to do as they do the work within each of these respective areas. The information was compiled initially, this was pre-COVID, into the manual. However, the next step of that is reviewing those processes and then communicating it to the staff with the goal of sharing that manual, which summarizes each of these various areas, and make sure that we review them for efficiency purposes, and then communicating to the staff at the beginning of the school year, so that way, we can make it much more streamlined, where very, very frequently, we get phone calls in the curriculum office of, "I can't find the textbook request form," or, "How do I request a field trip?" Once again, and kind of compiling all that information, streamlining it, and then sharing it with the staff so that it can be used efficiently.
Thank you.
That would be me. Thank you, Elsie. So, what we would like to review is our Safety Department's process for scheduling staff, assigning work to specific staff members, including overtime work on nights and weekends. We also wanted to include and look at our use of paper time sheets and the overtime approval process. So, this is something we've looked at and considered as important. It's a very topical subject right now with everything that's going on. We also wanted to consider as part of our process analysis and identification, how budget codes are used for recording these salary expenditure codes, or codes, salary expenditures, the approval of the overtime and the tracking of the overtime, and we wanted to sort of take into account how budgetary appropriations that are available are considered, you know, in these decisions, how these approvals occur. We wanted to consider how the creation of the budget and the monitoring of expenditures within the budget is occurring, and we wanted to make sure we had sort of budget alignment, if you will, so that the, you know, the approvals, the tracking, and the creation of the budgets are all in alignment and considered when we're assigning staff and approving expenditures in the security area.
Thank you. Mr. Kravitz?
So, we are always looking for substitutes for a wide array of positions across the district. Our teachers, teaching assistants, clerical, food service, bus drivers, safety, custodial, to name a few. And in speaking with anyone who shows up on a board event agenda as a hire, I meet with, I meet with them personally, I go through my list of expectations, what I've, you know, what the position entails. And in speaking with not only some substitutes in different positions, but also permanent staff members, there was a discussion about creating more consistency among the buildings depending on the specific substitute role that somebody's going to come into. So, for example, if I'm going to be a substitute teacher at one of the elementary buildings on a Tuesday, if I go on Wednesday, am I going to have a similar experience in terms of the information I'm given? Will, you know, how are the lesson plans given? You know, what's the information that's in our packet? Where's the emergency information? And, you know, when we are short subs in certain buildings or certain areas, it's hard because we're constantly trying to fill things, and we want to make sure that our people have as much information as possible. So, in addition to myself going over those specific expectations for all new hires, one of the things we're going to be doing is creating a position-specific substitute handbook. So, everybody who comes in will not only just be onboarded, but as part of the onboarding process, will receive, will receive a substitute handbook that will be position-specific. Obviously, there'll be things that will carry over from position to position, but if you're working in our, as a substitute food service worker in our high school, you may get different information because the requirements might be different, obviously, compared to a substitute teacher. And the reason for this, as I said, would provide consistency among the buildings. And then it just, what it does for my vantage point is it aligns our expectations for all substitute employees. So, even though I go through the process, and even though I speak about everything, this will have, give us something that we can now hand to our substitutes and say, "Here are our list of expectations." There is, are videos that they have to watch that are mandated, so everything will be in one, in one-stop shop.
Thank you. And then, as I said, we've been providing these updates monthly, and so next month, we plan on having our first district-wide data team. And the goal of the data team is really to look at data and decide what data we're going to use consistently among the grades and as a student moves up. Because one of the issues that we've had, and I think you, I think the speaker may have mentioned this, is that our state assessments have been not reported because our students didn't take regions, they didn't take state assessments. So, it's going to be really important for us as a school district to decide what data we value, and how are we going to use that data to be able to monitor or assess student success? Any questions?
Yes, I have some questions. First, I want to thank you for the update. In looking at the updates, I think what's lacking is, we don't know what was completed, what's in process, percentage-wise, and I think it's important for the transparency to the community to have that, even expectation of certain dates when things might roll forward. So, while it's a very high-level update and it does cover important topics, I don't know that it's as meaningful, and I don't know if any other board members have any questions or comments around that.
Yeah, I had a question on, in some of the areas. It'd be nice to see what all of the areas are, not just the ones we're focused on. I saw that on the tech, it showed all three, and then we said we're focusing on this one. In the other areas, it seemed like, I'm not sure what the other ones, if they're large projects or small, you know what I mean? I don't understand the amount of work that has to be put into the rest of it.
Are you talking about the three, the other two goals, or are you talking just about goal number one?
I think it's goal one. It's the process part.
Correct. So, what we can do is we can create, we've been doing that, and we sort of moved away from that, which is, we have a list, and then we say, "completed." Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
To say, "completed," or to say, "this will be completed in such and such a date?"
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
You can do that. And this, for the viewers, this lives in board docs. So, it gets put in, I mean, I think, I believe it got put in today, and that's what we normally do. We share it with the Board of Education on Friday, we let them take a look at it, and if they have any questions, then we would modify it, but then it gets released on the day of the board meeting, and then it lives in board docs. So, maybe this is a question that I could pose to the Board of Education. Do you think this should live somewhere else?
I prefer to keep everything in board docs, so it's one, it's one place for everybody to look. I don't want to speak for the public, but I would imagine that it's easier for them to go to one place to see the agenda, to see the updates, and see everything there.
I concur.
If anybody else has any feedback on that.
No, I think it's nice that it's a, it's a specific topic on the agenda.
Okay.
I really, I really appreciate the fact that there's a, there's clearly a large effort which allows us to tweak it, you know, one way or the other, I think.
And the reason we kept it in board docs is because when the viewers read it, or they have an opportunity to link on to the meeting so that they can hear what was being said about the actual goals update. So, well, the only thing we'll change then, moving forward, is just making sure that you see the complete, and if there's some dates that we know we'll put in, there'll be tentative dates, of course, but maybe by month.
Yes.
Okay.
That would be great.
All right.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you for the update. Moving on, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 1st, 2021 regular meeting?
Motion. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? An update on committee reports. I will start with policy. We just had a meeting, and our next meeting will be on January 6th, and we went over, excuse me, I'm trying to find my notes here, we started to discuss... This is better, that's why I like paper. Sorry, Elsie, remind me of my policy number, if you have it off the top of your head, because I lost it.
Maybe Dawn has it.
I don't know the number, I know that we were talking...
What was the topic?
The last meeting was the visitation with the safety and the...
Correct. On, on, did you say it a little bit louder?
It was the safety and the Wellness Committee portion of the visitation work, and we were going to be rewriting the policy to...
I don't, I don't remember the number.
I don't recall the number either, but we, we are working on it because I think what we had figured out was, there was some questions in regards to if, what the new policy is asking for from New York State is that we are being certain that we are visiting every building and that we have a report based on that building. So, what we were able to find out afterwards from our head of Buildings and Grounds is that we are up to date, we are in compliance, we do have all of that information, aside from when Dawn for visitation and Dawn from Facilities does their minutes, which are also posted on board grams, or, excuse me, board docs. We do also have our compliance records that go back so that we are in compliance with the new policy. So, what will probably happen is at our January 6th meeting, we will go ahead and fine-tune that policy, and we will add that to the agenda for at least a first reading. We just needed to make certain that we were in compliance with some of what New York State is now requiring us to do, but we're fortunate that we are in compliance. So, our next meeting for policy will be on Thursday, January 6th. Facilities, Dawn, do you have an update?
Yeah, right now, really, the only update is, we're looking at, we're studying the safety issues with the new road that goes between the high school and 32. We're looking at the possibility of a sidewalk so that students don't have to walk in the road. Because of the pandemic, there's been a lot of parents that pull in, it's more convenient because we split the traffic up. I think Patrick spent a couple days out there looking at the traffic patterns.
Yeah, so, so this is an issue that we've talked about relative to safety, and we've talked about it as part of the Visitation Committee. So, we got some estimates on installation of a sidewalk that would run on the south side of the access road for the entire length, and I included that in a board gram. It's, you know, it's over $100,000, you know, but it's something I think we should evaluate and consider if it, you know, contributes to the safety of pedestrians. It seems like kids have, and maybe always will, kind of use that as a way out to 32, maybe even walkers are using that. So, something we're evaluating and assessing.
Okay. Can I just say something to that? So, if we decide that we're going to build a sidewalk, then how are we going to manage people from 32 walking up and going to my high school?
Well, I think that's a question, that would be one of the questions that we would evaluate as part of the assessment, right?
Right.
So, there is an access road there, so people can walk on the road, and that's the problem, that the road is, you know, lends itself well to walk on. We had those gates installed to sort of keep cars, you know, off that and restrict that to our buses, and, you know, one of the issues that came up at another board meeting, I think you mentioned it, Mrs. Tauber, is, are there, is there signage there? And there actually is, I wasn't sure about that, but it, it's not a clear, it just says, "authorized vehicles only," you know? So, it's, it's, it's part of the assessment, Elsie, it's part of the analysis we would do. We would say, "Does it make sense to do this based on the expense? Are we encouraging people to, you know, to use this now?" You know, that would be all part of the, part of the assessment of that sort of investment. We know kids are walking on the road, we've had, you know, instances where kids are in the road, they're not getting out of the way for cars and our buses, you know? The intent of the access road was for buses, really.
So, I, so I just want us to be, when you start talking about the cost, then we should really think about having a safety officer that's going to be there as well.
That would be part of it.
That has to be a cost that has to be added in.
Yeah, the whole package. How would this work?
I know the sidewalk is $100,000, but then we have to take...
The operational expense.
We need to have, right, safety to be out there to manage the cars and the students and anybody else who wants to walk up to our high school.
The other thing is audit, and we also have the audit meeting on January 6th, and we'll be starting to work on the RFP for the internal audits.
And the next facilities meeting is January 4th.
Yep.
Dawn, for visitation?
We had a visitation meeting last week at Smith Clove and the Education Center, and the minutes have been filed and are on the board doc site.
Thank you. I just want to add too, because I know that it was a topic of conversation, and I know I brought it up in regards to facilities, but I, and I, we did receive an email today in regards from the high school, that they are urging the community not to do K-turns any longer on that service access road. That road, pre-COVID, was strictly for our authorized personnel. Unfortunately, due to COVID and having dismissal and drop-off, that road has now become used by students and parents, and to Mrs. Rodriguez's point, they are now walking on that road, and I think the concern that was brought up was with the inclement weather. Instead of walking on the grassy area, they will continue to walk in the street, and we unfortunately do have some community members and parents and students doing illegal K-turns in that road. So, we're asking for the community's support that you not do that, and I know that it is being looked at to go back to the way it was pre-COVID. So, the pickup would perhaps return to the way it was before we had to use that access road for unauthorized vehicles, but I don't think that's happening until January, correct, Patrick?
Right, that's, we're going to evaluate that...
Okay.
...in January.
Okay. Thank you. Reports by student board representative, Omar?
Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to get right into the updates. So, in the past month, since I've spoken, I have gone to visit Pine Tree, North Main, and I've talked to some student council members in the high school about some concerns and how they are, how they're doing adjusting to COVID and whatnot. I just wanted to give a quick idea of what I kind of asked the students. I kind of gave an introduction, just explained my role as a student rep, and then got to know them, gave some engaging conversation, and then I asked them, like, school, what do they like, what they didn't, and then I got into COVID, talking about how it affected them, what did they, what did they learn, biggest change, something that they did. So, from, from North Main, I spoke with a great group of fourth and fifth graders, and they mentioned how COVID was very hard for them, they saw a lot of internet problems, lack of participation, because they really liked the face-to-face conversations they had, the connections they made. They were really upset they couldn't be with their friends as often, and it was usually a lot of, like, just FaceTime and talking, but they were all very happy to be back in school. They were excited to participate in extracurricular activities, because the specific group that I actually talked to at North Main, most of them, if not all, were actually participants in the play, and I know they were very excited about that, and they would much rather be, prefer full-time school. I also spoke with a group of fifth graders at Pine Tree, and I actually got a chance to go and see their outdoor classroom, which I actually thought was very nice, very nice touch. It was a good place to just kind of go out and take a mass break while still learning. The kids loved it as well, but they weren't a fan of online school, just like most of us, didn't have the face-to-face conversations, connections. A lot of them actually forgot how, how nice it was to be in school. And then they were all happy to be back, learning in person, they were all excited for the extracurriculars. Like, I know Pine Tree does Field Day, and I know a lot of students were really bummed that they couldn't do it the years before. Currently, I have meetings scheduled with Smith Clove for Monday, and Central Valley on Tuesday, as well as the middle school, to discuss, just kind of give the same questions and see how they're doing. The high school, I know recently, I believe, two weeks ago, we talked about bringing the bathrooms back to full functioning, and I know that was a very big change that a lot of students were very happy with, and the bathroom flow, and it's been very, very contained since when we last had the concerns with them. I also wanted to bring up that, in the high school, we also have Holiday Spirit Week. So, on Tuesday, it's going to be Holiday Colors, Wednesday, Flannel Day, and then Thursday, Ugly Holiday Sweaters, and then off to the holiday break. So, happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you. Item number 11 on the agenda is personnel. Mr. Kravitz?
Thank you very much. I'm going to be respectfully requesting approval for the items listed under personnel, but before people motion, just want to point out a few things. First of all, we have five retirees on our agenda tonight, so congratulations to all of them after our long careers here in Monroe Woodbury. We also have four district-wide monitors. Three of them will show up under classified appointments and one under a change in assignment. And those monitors are being hired at full-time hours, help support our students. Their initial assignment, even though they're district-wide, will be at the high school to help with some of the concerns that have been raised over the past few weeks. And I also like to point out three people who are in our audience. First, we have our new account clerk in our Food Services Department.
First, we have our new Account Clerk in our Food Services Department, Agatha Villarreal. Congratulations, almost, if you approve. We also are looking to appoint our new Director of Security and Emergency Management, a gentleman by the name of Joseph Tripoto. Joseph comes to us, he's retired from the New York State Police Agency, and he brings with him a tremendous amount of experience, and we are excited to have you here, Mr. Tripoto. And we also have, we are announcing our interim principal tonight here at the high school, and somebody who's been here with us for a long, long time as a phys ed teacher and athletic director, and that is Lori Hock. And with that, I'm asking for approval for the items listed under Personnel.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Business and Financial, Patrick?
I would also respectfully request approval of the items listed on the Business and Financial section of the agenda, which include our monthly financial reports, a budgetary transfer for board approval, and approval of the tax re-levy for unpaid taxes.
A motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May I have a motion to adopt the reports for arrangements on committees on special education, 13.1 to 13.4?
Motion.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reports by Board and Central Office, Sergey?
I heard a lot of concern today, which probably stems from the fact that the numbers of COVID-19 affected people is up. I understand that the community is concerned and scared, and to be honest with you, no intervention is 100% effective. But I hope that a combination of multiple interventions will produce the desired effect of minimizing the impact of this virus on this community. I wish everybody stay safe and hope everyone as well. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Dawn?
I'm sure Dr. Hester was going to speak about yesterday's Reads Across America, but I just want to thank him and Mrs. Rodriguez and Mrs. Spenley for all the work that they put into bringing it to our school community. It was an absolutely amazing ceremony, and I was honored to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Dawn?
Again, welcome, Joe Tripoto. To put it in perspective, I want to make sure, I had to write it down to get all of Joe's titles correct. He was number three in the New York State Police. He was the Deputy Superintendent, Field Commander, Colonel Joe Tripoto. I think he was responsible for 5,000 uniformed officers in the field. So, we are very, very fortunate that we were able to attract him to Monroe Woodbury and look for great things. And congratulations to our new principal.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate all our Fire Safety Poster Contest winners, and thank you to North Main for orchestrating the poster contest, and thank you to the high school for hosting us this evening. I'd like to congratulate the new appointees and welcome Mr. Tripoto, and congratulate Lori Hock on her interim principal appointment. I'd like to wish everybody, oh, and also congratulations to the retirees. I'd like to wish everybody happy and healthy holidays, and I'll see you next year.
Thank you. Omar?
Just wanted to say happy holidays, everyone, and yeah, see you guys next year.
Thank you. Lisa?
It's a pleasure being here this evening, and I'd like to wish everyone a very happy and healthy holiday season.
Thank you. Vargov?
So, one of our goal, as mentioned by our Student Board Rep, Mr. Moskhar, is to, as a district, to get as many students involved in the extracurricular activities as possible. So, the Technology Department is working with Ms. Hock, Mr. Vero, Mr. Casti, and Dr. Hessler, since last couple of years, to explore the options to giving our students an opportunity to engage them into the esports. Electronic sports is the fastest-growing sports in the country, and recently it has been officially sanctioned in the high school. Esports not only provide our students a different, maybe a different options, but also gives the, basically promotes the teamwork, communication, critical, and strategic thinking, also allows the students to learn the sportsmanship, leadership, and camaraderie. We are going, we are planning for the next two, three months to finalize our location of the esports. It may be possible in one of the computer lab at the high school, and we will be ready to offer these to our students starting next September.
Thank you.
And happy holidays.
Eric?
I'd too like to echo the welcome and congratulations to all of our new hires. I look forward to working with you. We are beginning to plan the structure and design of our universal pre-K program for the 22, 23 school year. And currently, our request for proposals has been issued, and I certainly encourage any additional preschools that are interested in submitting a proposal to please do so. We anticipate having additional information on what the program will look like after the new year. I've participated in quite a few events over the last couple of weeks that have involved various student organizations from NHS to Everyday Friends, the Athletic Club, our Athletes Interact, where our students have been volunteering their time and their areas of expertise and their talents in many, many different ways. One of them was the Reads Across America event yesterday. And I find, obviously, the holidays are a very emotional time, and there's nothing more gratifying than kind of paying it forward. And yesterday's event in particular, I'd like to thank the entire school community, particularly Carol Spenley, for all of their hard work in making it happen. And just a reminder to anybody, if you haven't seen it, it's available on the district website on our local livestream. So, I definitely encourage everyone to check it out. With that, I wish everyone a happy holidays and look forward to seeing you in the new year. Thanks.
Thank you. Patrick?
So, congratulations and welcome to Joe, Joe Tripoto, and all our new hires, and congratulations to Lori Hock in her new position. I look forward to working with everyone, and happy holidays to everyone, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Matt?
One thing that Vargov had focused on, the esports, and just so you know, Vargov, I don't know if I told you this, but one of our new certified hires is a lever replacement and teacher at North Main, and he was a semi-pro esports player. And in addition to that, he also used to play, when he was in college, he and some friends would play the soundtracks to video games in their spare time. And so, he might be a resource to utilize once you really get it up and running. Congrats to the Fire Safety Poster winners, the Reads Across America, everybody said was just, was awesome. It is just a, and Eric, I know there's a lot of people who did a lot of things, but you did a lot for that, and it was awesome. And happy holidays and happy new year, everyone. Thanks.
Thank you. Jamal?
I'll keep it short. Tripoto, welcome to the family. I look forward to working with you, and Lori Hock, thank you so much for taking the responsibility. Other than that, happy holidays.
Thank you. Dan?
Just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and have a nice vacation a couple of weeks away from the building if you get away, and we'll see you in 2022.
Thank you. Anthony?
Yes, same. A very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everyone out there, and have a happy and healthy new year.
Thank you. Michael?
Welcome and congratulations to the new appointees, and a happy and healthy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Elsie?
Congratulations to our Fire Safety Poster winners. They were absolutely adorable to see them get up and participate in. It's just great to see our young students getting involved. Congratulations to our new appointees, to Lori, to Joseph, and thank you for joining our district, Mr. Tripoto. We are excited to have you come in and work with our interim high school principal. And let's everyone have a restful break. Oh, one more thing, I do want to say Reads Across America was absolutely wonderful. Eric did an amazing job, and Carol, and Prudence, and everybody who worked it just did a great job, and it was wonderful to see our kids cheer on our veterans and remind us that there are people out there who serve our country. And, you know, as some of the moms who spoke, lost their children to serving our country. So, it was a really great event. So, thank you for hosting that. And with that, I wish everybody a happy holidays.
Thank you. I apologize, I didn't mention at the beginning of the evening, but with Ms. Vitucci having left us, I just want to welcome Lisa Sudden this evening, as she will be working with us for the next couple of months until we have an official district clerk replacement. So, thank you very much, Lisa. I want to thank the high school again for hosting us. I know we appreciate it. It's a lot of work to get everything set up. So, again, thank you. Congratulations to all of the students. I agree with Elsie that it's wonderful to see them here and participating in events that we've had for years. Fire safety is always a great thing that we do at the elementary school, so congratulations to them. Congratulations to all the retirees and welcome to the new appointees. I look forward to working with Mr. Tripoto and Ms. Hock. I want to thank Ms. Hock also yesterday, and Dr. Hessler, and everybody else from behind the scenes that helped coordinate Reads Across America. It really was a very moving and touching ceremony, and I agree, if you have not been able to view it, I encourage you as a community member to go onto the website and watch it. It really puts things in perspective. And I just want to thank the Athletic Department for gathering up our students and some of our clubs that were here. We had a lot of students that were here, and I know Dr. Hessler and I both heard that as Reads Across America, it was literally a pit stop. They came into the cafeteria for maybe five minutes, grabbed a drink, and left. But in between that, they were able to tell us that our school had the best school spirit, and they loved that they were chanting "God Bless America," so it was really phenomenal.
It's not a competition.
It's not, but I just want to say that Monroe Woodbury, as of yesterday, you know, so let's give props where it's due. So, thank you. Thank you to the students. I want to thank for the new website. It's still a work in progress for me, to be very honest with you, but I appreciate all the hard work behind it, so thank you for that. Thank you to Mrs. Rodriguez and the Cabinet for the town hall. I thought that was very informative last night. I hope that the community was able to see that as well. If you were not able to see it, I encourage you to view it. It is an hour long. It is posted on the district website. And with that, I wish everyone a happy and safe holiday, and we will see everybody in January 2022. May I have a motion to adjourn into anticipated executive session to discuss contract negotiations?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.